Ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
And welcome. Let me ask you if you could all filter into seats somewhere out in the council chambers. Terrific. Again, good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, February 3, 2009, special meeting of the Glendale City Council, a budget study session, so to speak. Mr. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Certainly. Councilmembers Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yasefian.
Here.
Mayor Drayman.
Here. And Mr. Dunn, if you could read the report, please.
Sure. Director of Administrative Services Finance regarding overview of current budget forecast and schedule for discussion of the 2009-2010 budget.
Thank you very much. I will imagine I'm going to go to the city manager who will, in turn, punt the proceedings over to someone in finance. Is that right?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a few prefatory comments, then I'll turn to...
So you're going to speak and then punt?
I'm going to punt, and then we'll hope that our second team does their job here. But let me make a few prefatory comments about what's before you this morning. This is, I guess, what I call a special budget study session. We don't normally do this beginning of February. You usually begin to meet on budget later in April and May. But as you know, we are facing a number of challenges in maintaining a balanced budget and providing a level of services that you feel is appropriate for the community, given the current economic conditions and the pressures on our revenues. With that, the purpose of today is really threefold. One is to give you an update on where we stand with respect to the current year's budget, fiscal year 2008-2009, to show you the strategies that we have implemented already and will be implementing with your concurrence to ensure that this year's fiscal year's budget will remain balanced. And we're going to have to, as reflected in the strategies, and have been implementing a number of steps to considerably reduce costs and make sure that we stay within our means this fiscal year. And then probably more importantly, to begin to paint a picture as to what we anticipate we'll be dealing with in the upcoming fiscal year, and talk about some strategies that we would want to begin to consider as we enter into the next year's budget preparation process, which usually begins mid first part of April, but for your operating departments has already begun. And then lastly, because a number of the strategies impact the capital improvement program, to touch briefly on the implications of those strategies on the CIP. I've been asked by many of you what we are expecting of the council today. First and foremost is your ear in understanding what can be rather complex issues that we face. Your feedback on the strategies. We're not looking for specific approvals or direction, but if there's anything either with respect to the strategies we're recommending for this year to ensure a balanced budget, or any of the strategies next year that we'll be talking about later as we get into the budgetary process, or anything you think we've missed, we'd like to have that kind of feedback this morning. With that, I'll turn to Bob Elliott.
Before you turn to Mr. Elliott, let me also take care of a call. You answered one of the comments I was going to ask from you, Mr. City Manager, having to do with what specific input you and staff would desire from the council, other than our usual wonderfully informed opinions. So thank you for that. The other is, I'd like to ask anyone who plans to speak this morning to please turn in a speaker's card to Mr. Dunn up here. I'm asking now because we are limited on our amount of time this morning, and we have a good deal of ground to cover. So if you do intend to speak, please turn in your card now, so I can gauge how many speakers we will have and how much time I can give to those speakers. Okay? And I thank you for that. Lastly, I would just like to thank all of you for attending. It's good to see many of our community leaders are here, as well as folks that are here just specifically for their own education and interest and input. So thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I'll turn to Bob Elliott, Director of Finance, for an overview, but will at times, if you'll grant me the ability to chime in periodically with some supplemental comments on the presentation he's going to be making. I do want to say that what you're receiving this morning has been the result of a tremendous amount of work by what I call the Kitchen Cabinet Budget Team, Michelle Flynn, Bob Elliott, Yasmin Beers, Bob McFaul, but also all of the department managers and executives that have already been working for a number of months on strategies for maintaining costs to ensure a balanced budget this year, and have already begun work on assembling the structure for next year's budget that we'll begin to get into in April.
Mr. City Manager, I'm going to ask, as we customarily do, that my colleagues take their notes and hold their comments and questions until the end of the presentation, so that we can get through it. And then, if you wouldn't mind, I'm sure there's going to be many questions.
Sure. And as you can see, it isn't an overly long presentation. Mr. Mayor, you have made us believers on less is more, especially as it relates to PowerPoints, so we have kept this to a mere 17. With that, Mr. Elliott.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What we want to look at this morning is a brief reminder of how we got the '08-'09 adopted budget, the original submitted budget. On the top line was $164 million in revenues or resources and $174 million in expenditures. Through the budget study sessions and different reductions that were labeled out there, we got down to a balanced budget of $168 million. That's the adopted amounts, and that's where we started the year. With adopting that budget, you took a lot of actions, which are summarized here, which eliminated or reduced 43 full-time positions, and it had impacts on the SRO, the COPS program. There was one downsized engine company, the Council to Recruit Academy, and a variety of other things, in addition to asking the departments to reduce their maintenance operations in various different categories. As we continue throughout the year, obviously, our economic outlook, and we've talked about this before, it continues to deepen with the state. There are approximately now a $42 billion budget gap. They're issuing and going to start issuing en masse IOUs for all their obligations or suspend any payments at all. How that will ultimately affect us, we're not sure. If they're going to attempt any more takeaways, as they've done in the past. Obviously, there's still the credit market and sub-mortgage issues. Consumer confidence is down. Unemployment, what we heard yesterday, was 7.8 percent in December, which is very, very With that, Glendale continues to soldier along. Our sales tax and our revenue base is still compared to others. It's down, but doing as good as we can expect. Our sales tax receipts for the second quarter, actually, third quarter, were up slightly, 2.8 percent. LA County is down about 3.1 percent.
Mr. Mayor, on that, we should note that these are calendar year quarters. The third quarter sales tax is actually the first quarter of our fiscal year, 2008-2009. And as we noted during the first quarterly update, we won't receive our holiday season or second quarter, fourth quarter, calendar year sales tax numbers until latter part of March, first part of April.
On the property tax, our property tax is relatively stable. It's a mature community, unlike a lot of communities of the inland empire that are having mass foreclosures and property tax reductions. The estimate we've received is we're guaranteed the 2 percent under Prop 13. We'll probably get 2 percent increase in assessed valuation, but that does not take into account any appeal activity that may occur. So at this point, we're projecting basically a flat property tax. Our addition of Americana for our sales tax, we have yet to see the full impact as yet, but as everybody knows, we're losing Mervyn's, and Circuit City is also closing. In addition to that, we've had a fairly significant reduction in our auto sales, many as high as 25 percent, and that has impacted our sales tax quite a bit. So we are continuing to look at all the various factors with the economy. We're putting in place, or have put in place, a lot of efforts to control spending. We reviewed with you in October various revenue programs that we can pursue. We are doing the utility users' tax, and we're looking at what the state will or may do on their budget. If we ever know that, we'll obviously take that into account. What we've shown you in the past is this was our revised revenue projections for '08-'09. To that, down at the bottom, you'll see the Shoal Canyon assessment. We've added that. Basically, that relates to the reduced tonnage that's going into Shoal Canyon, which has impacted our revenue from that, so we have added that on to our revenues, shortfalls. So where does that leave us? At the top, you'll see the adopted budget, and we've added in what the revenue adjustments are, and you see the $8.4 million shortfall as we are projecting at this point. What we have done, and the proposals that we have implemented are noted on the blue bullets. We've had in place a hard hiring freeze with estimated savings of $2.1 million. We're estimating our reduction in M&amp;O efforts, or reductions in maintenance and operations at approximately $600,000, and we'll talk about that in a minute. We are closing our passport operation effective February 15, and that will have a net impact on savings. We have eliminated 24, we're proposing to eliminate 24 vacant positions, suspending the general fund transfer to the CIP, in addition to using gas tax to supplement the road projects in the CIP, which would free up general fund contributions. We are proposing to move all the CIP staff to the CIP fund in lieu of keeping them in the general fund, to better account and track for their efforts. And again, you'll see the Shoal Canyon losses there.
Before we move on, let me make some comments about some of these individuals. The elimination of 24 vacant positions, we've asked departments to prepare proposals for reducing their budgets 5 percent. That's about $8 million, if it were effective for an entire year and if all the reductions were taken. That would have a significant impact on services and would reduce staffing by somewhere in the neighborhood of 70-plus positions. We haven't implemented that, but we have, however, taken 24 positions from those offerings from the departments that are currently vacant and assumed that those positions would be eliminated. The departments will tell you that there's some concern that if we, in next year, begin to have to look at across-the-board reductions in departments, which is very likely, that we'll have forgotten about these 24 positions that were cut this year. And so I've assured them, we won't. We'll remind everybody that those contributions were made this year and have been counted as part of the savings this year, and will be counted as part of the savings next year. They reduce our burden and the challenge we face next year. Suspending the general fund transfer of the CIP, that was a contribution we proposed in this last year's budget, when it looked like we were going to have year-end savings and could commit some additional resources to the CIP, given the number of projects the council was interested in pursuing. Obviously, with the change in economy, that was overly optimistic, and we've pulled that back, at least proposed pulling that back. In reviewing all of our previously funded projects, we find that we have a significant accumulation of gas tax revenues, which can only be used for street and road maintenance. The general fund this year would otherwise have contributed about $1.5 million to street projects that are eligible for gas tax. We get about $4.5 million a year in gas tax revenues, Bob, if I recall. That is all dedicated to street maintenance, street reconstruction. The general fund through the CIP subsidizes an additional $1.5 million in this year. So we propose utilizing that backlog of gas tax revenues to maintain our current street and road maintenance program, and we are getting very good bids on all of our public works projects, 30 to 40 percent below the engineers' estimates. So frankly, it's a very good time to be out there with public works projects. We're not proposing to pare back our level of maintenance and construction, but frankly, to utilize the accumulated gas tax revenues to keep our street and road program where it is and yet pull back the general fund and general fund CIP support for streets and roads to $1.5 million. Let's see. The project management staff, again, in going through the capital improvement program, we realize that we have staff who are dedicated to managing capital projects, but a portion of their costs have continued to be picked up in the general fund. Those costs should all be allocated to capital projects. And for that reason, we've reallocated or proposed to reallocate the $740,000 back to the capital improvement fund and those projects, again, relieving the general fund of this burden. Lastly, the Shoal Canyon waste shed. This could be a rather controversial item. Before my time, the city went through quite a battle with LA City, LA County, in limiting the waste shed, or the areas from which waste could be taken to our Shoal Canyon landfill. With the down economy, waste stream is off. Rule of thumb is about a third of the waste stream is from household waste, a third is from commercial, and a third is from construction activity. While commercial and construction is down, and frankly, with consumption being off, even the household waste is down, so we're finding the waste stream in the Shoal Canyon being down. That affects the general fund and the CIP. We can alleviate that, we believe, by reopening the waste shed for a limited period of time and allowing, for example, Eagle Rock to take its waste into Shoal Canyon. They've had an interest in that. It's a very close landfill. No doubt, if we opened up, we'd get some of that waste stream. It's probably now going over to Puente Hills and other landfills. We'd probably get a good portion of that. We think we can recapture the revenues that we're losing without an impact on our landfill. Total of all those is $8,500,000 if rounded up. Our effort here is to ensure that we can remain balanced this fiscal year and not end the year in a deficit. I have to note that things like the hiring freeze is a rather blunt way to go about saving costs and isn't something that we'd propose, we continue doing in the next year. We think instead the council needs to have time to make conscious decisions about programs, service levels, staffing, in a way that meets what you feel are the priorities for the community, as opposed to an across-the-board hard hiring freeze that kind of catches a position as it becomes vacant, but there's no particular rhyme or reason as to the public policy that that pursues. So we've taken a rather blunt approach in reducing costs, ensuring that we can maintain a balanced budget this year, but believe that this will give us the time to then have conversations as we get into the '09-10 budget year about more conscious efforts to reduce costs tied to reductions in service levels and programs where you feel appropriate. So this is the wrap-up for '08-'09, for the most part, and with this, we believe, unless our second quarter sales tax revenues come in significantly less than we believe they will, and so far, we think we've been right on target, this will ensure a balanced budget for fiscal year 2008-2009. It will have impacts on services. The hiring freeze is having an impact. The elimination of 24 vacant positions will have an impact, and we'll feel those out in our various departments and our programs. And department managers are here now to answer any questions you might have at the end about the implications, but for now, we feel this is the best way to ensure a balanced budget for this year. Back to you, Bob.
Yeah. What we wanted to do and highlight a little bit more on the reduction on the maintenance and operations, we've highlighted some of the items that have been undertaken, and this effort largely has been headed by Mr. McFaul and Ms. Beers in terms of coordinating with the departments.
In addition to the very specific programmatic reductions that Mr. Elliott has reviewed, there were a number of just simply across-the-board efforts that took place to achieve what we believe will be a minimum of $600,000 savings that will contribute to ensuring there's no shortfall for '08-'09. Just in general, these include a number of various energy-saving reduction efforts in this range, all the way from the elimination of personal appliances in offices to being more rigorous on ensuring lights were turned off, reducing lighting levels in different facilities, and then shifting, actually, very significant items, shifting building maintenance to day schedules that actually provided a number of cost benefits at a relatively low service level implication. A very significant accomplishment was the consolidation, a final step in the consolidation of our fleet. The city has four separate garages. About two years ago, we undertook consolidating two of the garages to operate jointly under one common management structure. We have now combined the balance of the garages under one management structure. At this point in time, we've already reduced over 30 pieces of equipment, and we're currently reviewing the vehicles that are being taken home, very rigorously applying policies about what is appropriate as far as take-home vehicles, and looking at the entire equipment use each and replacement effort. We also have a number of efforts that have been put into place regarding fuel consumption and have also frozen all travel and training at this point.
In summarizing those efforts in the different actions taken with the revenue and expenditure reductions, the bottom line now summarizes what we forecast the end of the year to look like, in that we are in a balanced position. Moving on to '09-10, some of the just adjustments that we did from the '08-'09 are highlighted. These are, we're estimating a little bit of sales tax reduction, some increase in TOT from addition of hotels. And in accounting for our mutual aid, we're just from a structural standpoint, creating a separate fund to address that, so it's not skewed within the general fund, and some of the reductions in charges for services, primarily the reduction in costs from the enterprise passport operation.
Before we move off this slide, I expressed this to the budget team yesterday. I think the estimated increase in TOT is overly optimistic, probably $200,000 or $300,000 overly optimistic. So we need to take a look at that as we get some experience with the new embassy suites, but I think we're a little too optimistic on what we think that might produce in increased hotel motel taxes. So we probably have some weakness there.
Additions to '09-10, just to highlight some of the changes, given what we know today, we have built-in increases in various contracts for approximately $2.9 million. That includes benefits and related costs. Other salary and benefits and medical insurance, we're projecting at about $415,000 increases. $2 million, we're eliminating the built-in anticipated salary savings in the budget because it causes problems, and we're trying to figure out what our true savings are. Additionally, we're projecting an increase to the Public Safety Augmentation Fund, the transfer for the additional officers that are in there. And we'll note that at the bottom, the $5 million does not include any cost increase that may incur from the reduction of PEG fees being used for operations or potential charges from the INET fiber system that we may incur. So there's a recap of what our forecasted 2009-10 budget, given those assumptions, and then moving into, taking into account those items that we've already highlighted in '08-'09, we're projecting about a $7.3 million shortfall.
Let's stay on this slide, go back to that slide for just a second, Bob, if you would. A couple of quick comments on this. What we've tried to do here is to get the picture of the general fund back to what it will be in 2009-10. If those economies that we've implemented in '08-'09 that logically carry through and will carry through are taken into consideration, but other economies and strategies like the position freeze, the hiring freeze, this assumes that there's no longer a hiring freeze. This assumes that you make conscious decisions about positions to be eliminated prior to the first part of the year, and then you can implement those for the balance of the year. Now, obviously, if we continued with a hard hiring freeze throughout the whole year, you probably have in the neighborhood of $4 million plus in savings that you generate from that, in addition to the savings from the other strategies that we've outlined. However, we believe that we need to have a conversation and make conscious decisions about program reductions, positions to be eliminated, and not just do it through a hard hiring freeze in the upcoming year. But we want to point out, this just gets us back to a base budget for '09-10 that only considers those strategies that would logically flow through to the upcoming year. Two in particular I want to point out, the use of gas tax for streets, continuing to draw on that sizable backlog of gas tax revenues, and continue to not use the general fund for supplanting street and street construction. Again, the street program won't be diminished, we'll be drawing on those accumulated gas tax revenues for this. And again, this assumes that the Shoal Canyon waste shed is open, and by opening it, we'll regain the $320,000 that we will have lost in the general fund. With all of those, we still have then a roughly $7.4 million gap in the upcoming fiscal year.
Some of the strategies that we have looked at for dealing with that deficit include, obviously, reopening and looking at the contracts for all the bargaining groups.
Yeah, Bob, we should note there are three groups that have existing contracts: police, fire, and managers, GMA. As noted, the cost of those in the upcoming year is the other side of $2 million in incremental costs. We've had two meetings with the employee groups and have indicated our desire to begin to meet and talk about reopening those contracts. They've all been receptive to those discussions. They understand the challenges we face, and so far, have been very understanding and at least beginning to meet to talk about the implications of those cost increases on next year's budget.
Some of the departmental, obviously, the reductions, there would be impacts to our service levels and programs. 5 percent reduction would mean approximately 60 filled full-time positions and hourly being eliminated.
And Bob, a 5 percent would be in the neighborhood of $6 to $7 million?
Addition.
Yeah, correct.
$6 to $7 million. So some of the other items that we have looked at and tried to cost out are work furloughs. That seems to be a very popular topic with the state and other agencies are looking at those. A one-week furlough is approximately a 1.9 percent reduction in pay. We've looked at rescheduling a standardized 980. The savings there are approximately $80,000, just to savings in utilities if we do that. Obviously, a 4-9 work week is a 10 percent reduction in salary for those at a regular type work schedule, and would also save additional amounts on the closed Friday. 4-10, similarly, we'd get basically double the savings, or approximately $160,000 in utilities from closing every Friday. And then the variety of other things we're looking is all the different operations in contracting or privatizing other items, restructuring different city services or departmental services, and looking at all the different cost reduction items, some of which we've highlighted, like fuel reductions, et cetera. And then again, we'll continue to look at various revenue generating items, and we'll bring those to you at different points in time.
But frankly, we don't see revenue generating as the answer to this problem. This is mostly going to be about cost reductions and finding ways to reduce costs. In areas like privatizing, there'll be some service implications, but we believe there are two or three areas in particular that we could possibly privatize, reduce costs. Most of the privatization is in the area of internal support services of various kinds, but we think there's some opportunities there. But most of our effort and focus is going to be on cost reduction.
Lastly, what we wanted to do is bring back just a recap of the impacts of what the CIP would look like for this year, and some of the items we've recommended to reduce in terms of the sales tax and the Shoal Canyon fees, and the various revenue impacts, as well as the transferring of staff, and so on and so forth. So at the end of the day, that's the net impact to the CIP. So we just wanted to make sure that everybody saw that. And with that, can go to comments and questions.
Okay. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Let me... Let me first again ask if there's anyone that has a speaker card that plans, plans to speak, if they would please turn it in now. I would appreciate it. Thank you very much. Let me go to my colleagues, which is our, our routine, and then see whether they have questions or comments at this point, then we'll go to the public and come back to the council. Let me start on my right. Mr. Yusefian, do you have anything before we go to the public? Mr. Quintero?
One question.
Yes, sir.
The project management that's been in the general fund that you're transferring to the CIP, I gather that will be a permanent. Will that eliminate all project management related to CIP that is in the general fund, as far as you know?
Currently, the, the way the, the current program works is the, while the positions are initially budgeted in the general fund, the intent is that they charge out to the capital projects that they're working on. So there is a charge out that actually takes place throughout the year when they're actually working on a project that is in the capital improvement program. What we have found is that these positions, though, don't actually fully charge out to the projects, and so the general fund ends up picking up the difference for employees that are actually not, that are working on, on capital projects. When they are working on a general fund project of some sort, the general fund would be charged further time.
In other words, if you're doing a project and you're developing design, plan specs, whatever, some of that was, the preliminary work is being charged to the general fund, then when you got maybe past panel and some specs, you start getting charged on the CIP. So from day one, you'll move it all over into CIP.
From day one, it would be, it would be moved over, right?
Makes sense.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to take our speakers. We'll give you about three minutes. That should take us to a little more than bottom of the hour, and that should give my colleagues up to about twelve minutes apiece to be able to ask questions and make comments. All right. Thank you. Our first speaker is Dorothy Grabelski, followed by Bruce Philpott.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilmember, City Manager. I'm a resident of Glendale, and I'm opposed to, I think it was, the 1% cut in our police and our fire. This is our safety in Glendale. As you are aware, when people move into a city, their main concerns are safety and good schools. When I was in real estate about thirty-five years ago, people were moving into Glendale for these reasons. About thirty years ago, I was in a high school gym when the police were forming their first gang unit with two officers. Later, they added an additional two. I think it was in the late 1980s, 1990s, when, early 1990s, when Glendale had drive-by shootings. Many gangs were evolving and causing many problems. In the late 90s, organized crime was reaching into the local gangs and our children. Glendale changed, and so did our schools. They were no longer distinguished. I remember people wanting to move out, and some were even using La Cañada addresses, and they were even living in garages, just so they can send their kids to a safer and better school. What happened is we got community policing evolved, and what they do today are very important. They started with one officer in the middle schools and high schools, noticed that it worked, and then they put two in at each school. The officers provide mediation, counseling, they build trust with the children, they deter crimes, and oversee the general safety of the students and the staff. With the 5% cut, we are now done to one school resource officer at our high schools and none at Wilson, Roosevelt, and Toll. We need our school resource officers back in our schools. Okay, and community policing also does a lot of community events, including Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week, stranger danger talks, which I even personally requested at a parent education preschool program. They do neighborhood watch, offer inspections, they do vacation checks for residents, they meet with homeowner groups, merchant associations, and they identify signs of blight in our city and take steps to remove them. They work with code enforcement to prevent slums from forming, and they deploy resources to remove hazards and cleanups. They look at long-term solutions, they mediate neighbor disputes and organize and special community events. Now, do we want to do away with our community policing program, which also includes our youth program, such as PAL, which is football soccer cheerleading? There's also a boxing program for kids ages seven to 14, Monday through Friday. This helps the kids work out their anger and aggression, keeps them out of gangs. There's an equestrian program for boys and girls ages nine through 18. And the one that I have been involved in since its inception is the STAR program, which is students' training as role models for ages nine to thirteen. We have brought them to city council when they graduate from the program. And I'm going to be leaving here some letters from some of the parents who have had and who have today their children in this program. And also, I want you to know, there's a recent article in the news press about filling the void at our schools left by the removal of these school resource officers. Crime stoppers are heading back into our schools after a two-year absence to encourage students to report crimes. Middle school students trusted the officers, and they often went to them if they were being bullied. Is that my time?
Yes, it is, ma'am.
Okay.
If you'd like to, if you'd like to leave those letters--
I'm going to, yes, may I? And also--
Yes, ma'am, if you'd leave them with Mr. Dunn, he will make sure we get--
Now, there's one more thing, Mayor, if I may, please.
If you, if you can conclude very, very quickly.
Okay. This was delivered to me late yesterday. This is from Prudential Realty over on 1625 West Glen Oaks Boulevard. They, I have signatures here on a petition for, I have eighty-one signatures. I will also give this to you with a cover letter saying how important it is for our police and fire, for our safety in the city of Glendale.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Grabelski. All right, Bruce Philpott, followed by Joe Zamet, Zamot, Zamoe, Zamet, thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Draymond, and members of the city council, staff, and the public. My name is Bruce Philpott. I'm not sure, but it seems to me that there's less cause to worry about our general fund budget than to celebrate some very positive aspects of it. Yesterday morning at the Audit Committee, when staff presented our last ten years, or last eight years of the general fund revenue and expenses, this document right here posts a $60 million surplus in our general fund. The city staff presented this yesterday morning, yesterday morning to the Audit Committee. I also reviewed the nine major revenue resources, and in that same period of time, it posted a $63 million revenue surplus. And at the same time, we've acquired $332 million in bond debt. That's a total of new bonds, which is actually revenue. So that totals $455 million in the last eight years to support our general fund. Yet, we're continuing to talk about staff reductions, reductions across the board, and severe issues. I think the average citizen would wonder why with all that surplus. Maybe it's because the overall government funds have reported, as of this date, about a $300 million shortfall, not the general fund. But this is the general fund that we're addressing. I think it's more important that this body address the overall cash flow of our general fund, not, not just our, not just our general fund, because that is where that 500-pound gorilla is, and that is where no one seems to be addressing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philpott. Joe Zamet, followed by Greg Krikorian. I apologize for mispronouncing your name.
It's happened before, don't worry. Very good. First of all, thanks for letting me up here, and also thank you for sharing this information with the audience over here, too. I also want to applaud all of you for your prudence and your, and your foresight in looking at the issue ahead of time and trying to manage it in advance versus reacting and get late, reacting to it later on. As a finance person, I understand the discussion here today, and I don't envy your position. I've been on your end of the table before, too, in these discussions. But from learnings and from my experiences, just making sure that as a city, that as you make your decisions, that you're always aware of the, you know, the law of unintended consequences, where cuts in one area, which may lead to maybe reductions in services, may lead to other issues down the road, which may impact your revenue stream or your expense structure, too, going forward. And in terms of working with some of the items I've heard here today regarding police and everything else, I've spent the last year working closely with your police department. I find him very professional. We have some, we've done a lot of good things with him over the course of the year. And my interest as an employee here in Glendale, working for Nestle, is that, A, we do have a good working environment here, a place where people want to come to on a professional as well as a personal basis, which only wins for everybody involved. In terms of your discussions today, I'd only maybe ask one question or one thing to consider. I've heard a lot of the topics regarding your revenue streams and your expense structures, but I'm not sure how your purchasing is set up here, how you buy things. I know Nestle, personally, we've gone through from independent purchasing structures to one that actually operates for about seven operating companies here in the U.S. We've managed to establish substantial savings from that over the course of time. And I'm talking in the millions of dollars as far as that would go for us also. Maybe it's something that could be considered, maybe you already do it with your sister cities over here, too. That's it, thank you very much.
Okay, and your name for the record?
Joe Zamet.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you. Greg Krikorian, followed by Al Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Draymond. I appreciate, I'm here as an individual, so I want to clear it here, I'm not here as a board member of the Board of Education.
I thought you were here because the school district was going to offer some funds.
No, we love you. No, we, we need funds. No, we truly understand the situation we're in, not only the state, but the whole nation's in a very severe crisis. And I appreciate the work that you and our City Manager, Starbert, has done, just viewing the report itself. It's a very serious situation. We have to deal with this in a very serious time. But that being said, some past decisions on the SROs in the middle school was a big mistake. I think that's an area we have to look at. A past speaker talked about security and having our resource officers at our middle schools. But I'm, I stand before you here as a father of five, owning a small business in a town, and being a community activist in our community. The last thing we want to do is cut our public safety and cut ours, from our police and our fire. What you're doing is you're sending a signal, a billboard on the streets saying, "Gangs, violence, come in, we're here." It, it's not a good way of doing it. It's my personal belief that when we do this, I've even seen some challenges at our middle school lately since the SROs left our schools. I've seen new things arise. SROs and having security and having proper police force and fire support in our city is imperative. They could notice things on school campuses that a teacher couldn't notice. They could notice that gangs growing, gang, and gangs are recruiting every day. And the worst thing that we could do is do any cut in our police and fire, especially in the area of safety and providing our fire services. There's a lot of suggestions there, as I've seen, and we're all dealing with budget cuts. Individually, as a family, we're dealing in cuts, as a business, I'm dealing in cuts, and also on the other side of the aisle, we're dealing cuts in the school board because we're addressed with eight to 10 million dollars in cuts. But it's almost the same edge of staying away from the classroom. When people say, "Stay away from the classroom," stay away from the police and fire. I think it's imperative. Having a business about a year ago, we were broken into, and people will get desperate in this tough economic times. And when there's desperate measures, we need to have the best security force and fire department ever. I recall the riots, the LA riots, and we all remember those times. It was a very scary time, living in this Southern California. But one thing we could say is Glendale was safe and protected, because we have a heck of a police department and one of the best fire departments. And just as a father, and as a community leader in this community, this is the last area I'd want to see us cut, but also send a little footnote to reinstate the SROs in our middle schools. And I know it's tough times, maybe there's some creative ways of piggyback purchasing, looking for new ways. And I know you have a great staff and a good council, and John, underneath your leadership, I appreciate the cooperation we have had this year. It's been a breath of fresh air. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Starbert.
All right. Al Hoffman, followed by Aram Kazazian.
Morning, Mayor Draymond, council and staff, Al Hoffman, resident of Glendale. I've noticed several things about moving civil servants to contractors, and I think this is really important. I know an employer I used to have, we really relied heavily on that. We had contractors run our whole networks and everything, and they were usually on a three-year contract. If they weren't performing well, we'd get a new, new contract. Also, individuals who weren't performing could be released, and it's very difficult to do that with civil servants. Plus, you don't inherit the lifelong pensions that you have to pay out to civil servants. And along those lines, I, I really have concerns about our unions that we have. They need to get in line with our budget situation. I think unions have kind of went over their edge from employee protection to becoming PACs. I think I'm really opposed to any union in the city supporting any council candidate or any candidate. That should not be, it's just not right. Need to, need to get that under control. But unions have driven up our costs. They've totally wiped out the automotive industry. That's, it's pretty established now, that's what happened. I noticed that you cut in the fire department, you've got one engine down to three, and I was wondering, has there been any impact? I don't know how long that's been happening and where it is, and was there any impact about that? And are you considering doing more of that based on the results of that one? Also, I noticed there was a restructuring of the mutual aid revenue. I wasn't sure what that meant. Is that where we get money from different localities when we support them in fighting fires for our equipment and our personnel, that we have costs on going out of the city? Do we get revenue back from that, and, and how much is that? And is, does anybody have those numbers? That would be interesting to find out. And I noticed on the landfill issue, we're kind of hurting on that, I think it was over a year ago, there was some people here, I think from Los Angeles County and city, about taking the trash and converting it to energy. And this would be really a big greening effort that we could start, and I didn't know where that lies right now, if we pursued that, and that could be resolved in savings and to the whole rubbish on business. And I noticed the fleet management, we've cut back take-home vehicles. How many vehicles did we have that were take-home, and how many are we still doing? I think that's an important issue. And are we still going to have GWP transfers to the general fund? I haven't seen that listed anywhere, and I'm hoping there won't be, because the GWP is hurting itself, so there shouldn't be any fund transfers to the general fund.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hoffman. All right, Aram Kazazian, followed by Herbert Milano.
Yes, my name is Aram Kazazian. I'm opposed to the safety cut of our city, that's an important issue. Also, the other item I'd like to see not to be done is on the Shoal Canyon. This is our chance to study the Shoal Canyon. I was here years ago, I said there are other methods where we can dispose of our trash instead of piling them, and this was not taken serious at a time. There are a number of other cities that are burning this trash and, and transposing it into energy and transposing it to ash. I will present a special presentation on that, and by us opening it to other cities at this time, I think will defeat the purpose. We want to extend the life of our trash land, not decrease it. This is the time we should, we should do that. So please look into that, and let's see other ways we can cut our costs rather than decreasing the police and fire. There should be other solutions to that. I don't think we have looked into all the different aspects of it at this time yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kazazian. Herbert Milano, followed by Armin Ivedian.
Good morning, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. Years ago, when I originally came to the city council, I've, I gave all kinds of accolades concerning the city being one of the best managed cities in California. Slowly but surely, as I began to learn more about the budget, about the expenditures, it's taken me several years of compiling information and studying it to see the trends that have occurred, trends that are very troubling. And this is information that generally is not available to those individuals who sporadically watch the city council or sporadically take a look at the budget. So here's some information that I've presented several times in front of the Audit Committee, in front of previous city budgets, but here it is. Between 2001 and 2009, the population of Glendale increased by three and a half percent. During that same period of time, general government expenses increased by 110%. During the same period of time, the, the most significant increases that we have had have been in increases in the overall expenditures to fire and police. Now, I know how important it is, the perception of safety. Glendale has always been safe, and since 1992, we have had a significant decrease in terms of Part I crime and Part II crime as well. But let me tell you about the, the increases in the fire, in police departments. In 2000, our police department budget was around 27 million. By 2006, it had grown to 48 million. When it came to the fire department, it was 20 million. By 2006, it was already at 37. Right now, police and fire account for 48% of the general fund, and-- Right now, police and fire account for 48% of the general fund, and this city council has incremented both in terms of salaries, personnel, pensions and so forth, and benefits to these departments. And now, if this is at all visible on television, you will see the increases compared to parks and rec, management services and so forth. And you see that there is an exponential increase in those two departments. So now, when it comes down to individuals who are retiring at 90% of their pay, especially when they had increases during the last year, you have individuals who are now receiving $160,000, $170,000 in pensions, and the city's pension obligation is increasing significantly. It was 24 million as of last fiscal year, and it's now probably going to increase to 30. The decisions that you made years ago to support police and fire to the general public seems as a commendable thing to do. Unfortunately, it has a significant impact on the budgets, especially when we do not have performance measures and performance outcomes at the end of it. We all want a safe city. We all want fire and police to be strong, but at the end of the day, we'll have to take a look, very hard look, at how we spend those dollars in the future. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Milano. Armin Ivedian, followed by Rick Barnes.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council and city staff. My name is Armin Ivedian. I am the 2008 president of the Glendale Association of Realtors, and we have a very large representation of realtors here to express our concern for the situation at hand. Today, I speak as a 30-year resident of Glendale, as a concerned husband and father of a 12-year-old daughter who goes to school in Glendale. Plus, I speak as a homeowner, a Glendale investor and a local realtor, anxious to maintain the safety and reputation of this wonderful city. I've always bragged about how safe our city is and how amazing the response time of our police and fire departments compared to our less fortunate neighbors. For years, I have boasted about Glendale being one of the safest cities of its size anywhere and how our fire department has the highest ranking achievable in the United States. This is why investments make sense in Glendale. Businesses thrive. Our schools and children excel. Our homes appreciate more in good times, and they aren't depreciating less than our neighbors in recent years. But suddenly, all of this is threatened. Budget-cutting pressures are upon us on a local, statewide and national fronts. Extremely tough decisions have to be made, and no matter what is voted on, a number of residents and city employees will be hurt and disappointed. Recently, south of the Colorado Boulevard was designated as a safety zone where gang members' activities are restricted. An excellent idea, but if we don't have enough police officers, how are we going to enforce this injunction? Perhaps we can send the officers from the northern neighborhoods to keep an eye on our southern borders. But what if these gang members move to Brand Park, perhaps to Gloria Park next? I have been an avid opponent of raising taxes of any kind in the past. However, I believe citizens of Glendale will believe, to pay a couple of extra bucks here and there through utility taxes or what have you somehow to make up and not lose the police and our fire departments, I think people, for once, will be in favor of such an additional payment. All in all, I don't envy the task which you have inherited. In closing, I would like to leave you with these famous last words: "When in doubt, exercise safety first." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ivedian. Rick Barnes. Good morning.
Mayor, city council and department heads. Full house today. I've been thinking about this quite a bit, and I keep looking as I walk in our neighborhoods, versus quality of life versus safety. I know you have a hard choice to make, but I'm going to bring up a couple of things I think you should look at. One, safety, in my mind, is absolutely the most important thing. The night that a couple walkers were mugged on West Glenwood Road, the police found the individuals. They had the police dogs that were there to track them down. The dogs also caught some of the evidence, like clothing and stuff, for the arrest of these individuals. I think that's safety, and that gives me quality of life. When I hear council talk about quality of life, I keep hearing about money being spent. And I'm sorry, but when I have to have a project come through our city permit department, it takes seven department heads. When we need to go to design review board, why? When we're paying very high-paid, very smart, intelligent employees to make decisions, why are we doing that? Why aren't we giving it to the employees, and if there's a problem, then maybe go someplace else? Why are we spending so much money when you have someone that is opposed to a development? They pay $500, and the developer pays $100,000, $200,000 to get in front of you guys, and that opposition is another 500 just to get to you. So maybe someone's out $1,000. I'm saying, raise that fee to $2,500 to $5,000. Make them aware that I've sat in a meeting and watched for six hours, where you had department heads or people from engineering and so on sit there, and they're being paid a high salary just to say, "This goes back to engineering, so whatever you're talking about today doesn't matter, it still has to go to engineering." After six hours, that's a lot of employee time, and you guys want quality of life. So what you keep doing is trying to make it so that more people make a decision. No, it doesn't need to be that many people. One person can make a decision in that department, but we're going through many, many departments. I have people that are so upset with our development here that they're choosing not to buy in Glendale because they choose not to have what you guys have put on them as all the permit process. You guys have said something about quality of life and that there are permits that are not being pulled. You know why? Because when you have some of your inspectors that come out and are absolutely the hardest to deal with, I'm just doing that on air conditioning on some buildings, and the department, the people I've called in said, "We don't want to do it, or we're going to charge you a 25% surcharge for air conditioning." That's because there's so many departments that people have to get approvals from. Why aren't we reducing in there? Police services, believe me, I believe with the SROs in the middle schools was the first sign of a real mistake. Young people are the ones that are at cause for crime, or they know about crime. And again, in Crime Stoppers, that's one of the areas where we get most of our tips are from the young people. Again, thank you. It's Rick Barnes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barnes. All right. That is our last speaker card. I will close the oral input portion of the special meeting and turn to my colleagues. Let me start on the, and let me also remind you, we have a total of about 12 minutes per council member exclusive of time for staff to respond. So let me start on my left, Mr. Weaver.
Well, I'd like to correct a misconception that might be out there. When we talk about the problems we're going through now, we're not talking about what we did in the past. In terms of the resource officers, I oppose the cutting of them, but it was a collective decision in this council to reduce them. So we're not in a position here to be adding back into police or fire. We're going the other way. That's true of every item that we're talking about. You have to look at what we have to do. Everyone is being hurt in this country. We all know that. You can look at the stimulus package that Senate is now looking at. My concern is that there are projects, even that stimulus package, that shouldn't be in it. You hear about landscaping the Washington Mall, $200 million. You can go down the list of things that aren't stimulus that are in there. For me, when I look at this city, I'm looking at what's important to the city: place and fire, infrastructure. You want to start talking about soccer fields and swimming pools and all that, that's gravy. We're all hurting. To make the cuts, what we have to do is maintain the police and fire and the infrastructure. We don't have that, we don't have a city. And we got a report today on our desk, dollar spent on police per resident, the lowest, Pasadena, Burbank, L.A. We're the lowest of any. The sworn officers per thousand, we're the lowest of any of the four. Yet we hear the complaints that we have too many police, we have too many fire. That is just so much garbage. And people like Herbert Milano get up and talk about it, they just don't get it. I've sat in labor negotiations for 12 years now, and I can tell you, from my standpoint, we have done what we've had to do to be competitive with other cities. We have lost good people that have been trained for 20, 30 years. We've lost them to other cities because we haven't been competitive. And if you are not competitive, you're not going to have the best people working for On, let's see, what else did I write down? Other thing, looking at the possibilities, one thing that I pushed for in the past, and it didn't get anywhere, and I'm just going to pull this one thing out again, is the 4-10 work schedule. I worked under a 40-hour week, five days a week. I worked on everything down to the 4-10, and I thought the 4-10 was the best. Reason is, you can have, on a 4-10 schedule, you can have the city open for longer hours, in my opinion, like 6 to 6, whatever. People want to come to City Hall, can come early before they go to work. They can come after work and still find the city open. But core hours, like 9 to 3. That closes down the city, basically, except for essential services like peace and fire and the infrastructure requirements. And you save on the electrical, you serve on everything in the city, that all the lights, everything's turned off. People are off those days, they're going to do two or three things. One, they're not going to drive down to City Hall from wherever they live, saving on their gas consumption and cleaner air. They also will probably schedule their doctor's appointments on the Fridays they're off. They will probably have more three-day weekends, going out and spending their money, which is good for the economy. So I see a lot of positives in the 4-10, even though I've been shot down repeatedly on offering that to the city. So when we start looking at different ways to save money, I hope we look at that because there are cost savings and there are benefits to the community and to the workers in such a system. I'm content with what I've heard so far. This is for information only today. I think the proposal has been made, as good as we can get at this point in time. Remember, there's going to be a new council sitting up here in two months. It may be identical, it may be changed. So to get into too much negotiations on anything for the following year, it'd be premature. We have to address this year's, and I think the recommendations are fine. Only other thing I'll say, and I've said it before, and I haven't liked it, I think all the associations in this city should not give a single penny to any candidate. If you want to play the horses and you want to put on the sure bet, you back the incumbents because you think if you don't do that and they get reelected, you know what's going to happen in labor negotiations. And to the challenger, and I was there before, it's no fun fighting an uphill battle against the associations. They ought to stay out of it. The monies they're donating to the candidates, they could give to charities and community support. They don't belong in the business of endorsing candidates. So I'll leave it with that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Weaver, thank you. Mr. Quintero.
Well, I want to specifically thank Mr. Elliott and the staff in general. I think you've done a good job of putting this information together. I have some questions. I would like, whenever possible, I'd like to have a list of some of the positions that were not filled, some of the full-time positions that weren't filled. And in terms of the sales tax, it's certainly positive that our sales tax projections roll, actually, the sales tax went up slightly at 2.8. The rest of L.A. County has decreased 3%. We'll wait until March or April to see what our fourth quarter sales tax will be like. I do know the Glendale Galeria actually had an increase. I believe they mentioned 5.6% increase in their... Quick action, the vacant positions recommended for eliminations are...
As Mr. Quintero's just been handed a late-breaking bulletin.
You want to study for a minute?
Get a chance to take a look at it. Okay. Then I'm going to, either talking to the Director of Public Works or Mr. Starbird, but I'm going to be interested to see what streets are being paved and what streets aren't being paved because there's a, there would be a huge expenditure for Central Avenue, and I'm not interested in doing that at this point. I drive up and down Central on a regular basis, and it's still doing well. So that's just one. I don't know if that's part of the cuts or not, but that's just one large expenditure that I think we can avoid. Then I'd like to have an overall, I've never really gotten a feel, I'd like to have an overall idea of how many take-home vehicles there are at departments and so forth. In terms of continuing the hiring freeze into 2009, 2010, I think that's exactly what we're going to, what to have to do. Hopefully, there will be a bit of an uptick in the economy that will give us a little more income, but I can't imagine that we wouldn't continue the hiring freeze into 2009, 2010. Then in terms of the work schedules, we'll see where that takes them. I'm into the city being open five days a week. That's, now, how you handle the personnel within that schedule, that's a different story. I think the more flexible we are, the better it is for the city, the better it is for the departments, and the better it is for the individuals. So we just need to go to flex work schedules. I don't have any problem with that at all. But in terms of the opening and closing of the city, Monday through Friday, I think is very important. I'm also, we have talked in the past about combining the redevelopment efforts with community development, with neighborhood services. I mean, we've talked about revamping the city departments and structures, and we never really finalized that, or we've never really had a report as to what type of savings that might bring to the city and a better effort in terms of delivering services. So I hope now with these tight times, I hope we approach that again, and let's do something. It's time to at least have the city council make a decision as to how we can maybe restructure those departments that are kind of tied in in terms of housing and so many other, so many other things. Then turning to the speakers, I absolutely am not interested in cutting community policing. I think that's the most effective tool that law enforcement has, so I don't have any interest in doing that. And I absolutely do not have any interest in reducing the firefighters on engines. That is a big, big mistake. We live in a city with three mountain ranges, three freeways, 20-plus-story buildings, multifamily neighborhood, some of the highest densities in L.A. County, and reducing firefighters on an engine is just absolutely losing proposition, as far as I'm concerned. Then, well, okay, now I'd like the staff to, and like Mr. Weaver mentioned, incidentally, we have the lowest per capita in terms of our police, the numbers. We have the lowest per...
Capita.
Capita. And just to make sure that people understand that, per capita policing expenditure comparisons. The city of Glendale is the lowest at 300. Pasadena jumps to 420 per capita. Burbank jumps to 364, and Los Angeles jumps to 370. And in fact, Los Angeles is on a hiring jag, trying to get hundreds and not thousands of LAPD officers sworn in. So I think we're doing quite well in terms of our police, uh, services and we get a lot for the money, a lot of bang for the, for the buck. I'd like, uh, well, probably Mr. Elliott would be the best or, uh, or Mr. Starbird. But, um, we're constantly hearing about pensions and pensions and pensions, and it makes it seem like when someone retires that the taxpayers of the city of Glendale are going to have to pull, pull money out of their pockets and give it to the retirees. So I'd like Mr. Elliott to explain, explain to the public how the pension system works in the state of California, how it ties in with, uh, our PERS, how it ties in with, uh, the city of Glendale, the contributions from the employees, a contribution from the city, the investments that PERS has that, uh, that actually pay the retirees pensions. Mr. Elliott.
Uh, Mr. Quintero, the, uh, how the pensions are funded are through a rate based on payroll. Safety's approximately 24% of payroll. Um, and that rate, uh, takes into account the actuarially determined liability, meaning, um, whatever it's going to take for that individual, um, for now and in the future. So, um, as of, uh, last financial statement date, we are about 90% funded, which is typically where you want to be in 85 to 95% funded for your pension programs. And that is a rate paid by, um, 24% by the city and then, uh, a portion is borne by the employees, uh, as a share going into, uh, the retirement system. And, and like most cities, the, uh, city only have, or the employees only pay the Medicare portion of the Social Security. So there's basically no Social Security for our public employees. So the pension is meant to, um, provide pension, but, uh, in lieu of Social Security as well.
Okay, thank you. Want to add anything, Mr. Starbird?
Yeah, if, if I can. With the state retirement system, you have to take a long view on overall costs. Um, if you speak to actuaries, which we do every year, we retain an actuary able to come in and evaluate our rates, evaluate what PERS is doing every year, so we meet and we talk about this a lot. Uh, there was a time in my relatively short time with Glendale where the employer contribution rate was zero, and Glendale was what was called super-funded within the PERS statewide retirement system. That means we had so much excess assets, contributions that we and the employees have made because both employees and the city contribute to the plan. Uh, non-safety employees contribute 8% now. Safety employees then contribute 9% of their gross wages into the PERS system, and then we also have a contribution. At a point in time, the employer, the city's contribution was zero for many years because PERS was doing very well on its investment portfolio. It started back in, uh, early 2000 with the downturn in the stock market that we went out of being super-funded and our rates began to go back to what they had been ten and fifteen years before. So we enjoyed a tremendous benefit during a period of time when the stock market was doing well and the portfolio was doing well. Now it's not. But you have to look at, at PERS investment and our investment in the state system over the long haul because Glendale's going to be here long after work done and there will be employees and they will be contributing and we will be contributing. We are at a point that our contribution rates are higher than we like. That's because we lost value in our investments. We're not going to dump all of those investments, we're not going to sell them, and likely, over the long term, they will regain value and we'll see our rates begin to drop. Another point, for those employees that don't spend their entire career with Glendale, yours truly is an example, and many employees spend a portion of their time here, maybe at the end, maybe they're here in the beginning and move on. Police and fire generally spend their entire careers here. But for many employees, those employers, over the years that, that employees work for them, they make contributions into the statewide system. It allows an employee to take their retirement plan and go from one city to the next and still have a consistent retirement program. Uh, so it's important to look at retirement costs in the long view. Today, rates are relatively high because of the loss of value in our investments with PERS, but they're going to be regained over the long haul and our rates will return to some level of normalcy. And once upon a time, we were paying nothing for a considerable benefit.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, now I have a question because this number, or a number similar to this, comes up on a regular basis, and that is a $300 million shortfall, a $300 million shortfall. In all the years that I've been here, including this year, I, I can't quite pick up on what exactly people are talking about when they talk about 300 million shortfalls. Did any of you, uh, understand what that was about?
Let me, let me, let me feel that because I've had it, uh, thrown out during presentations, for example, to homeowners groups. Uh, the reference is made to the difference between, I'll call it, current revenues and current expenditures. And it doesn't take into consideration the fact that there are resources that we draw on that are not considered current revenues. For example, proceeds from bond issues, and I'll use GWP as an example. GWP has issued a little over $100 million in infrastructure bonds to invest in rebuilding infrastructure, electrical and water systems. You've had long discussions about that. The proceeds of those bonds aren't considered revenues, and so if you look at revenues, but yet, yet the expenditure of those monies are considered expenditures. So if you look at the difference between current revenues and current expenditures in GWP, you will see that there are expenditures higher than current revenues. If you look at total resources available to spend, this city can't print money. We have to have a balanced budget. So you've got to have resources to cover expenditures. In the case of GWP, that $110 million is being invested in infrastructure that will far outlast the payment period for repaying those bonds. Now that's one, that's one of the areas where you can have that. Another area is, for example, our purchase of open space land. We utilize reserves over the past six years to purchase a considerable amount of open space land and parkland. The extent that we've utilized, uh, reserves to do that, then that's not current revenues. It's an investment, taking an asset and converting it to another kind of an asset. And yet, that will show up on an expenditure sheet as an expenditure in land. And so that's another example of how you can have expenditures in excess of revenues. But we're not allowed to run a deficit unless you, the city council, approve resources to cover off all expenditures, whether it's the general fund or GWP.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we're obviously in difficult times. All you have to do is pick up a newspaper, watch television, so forth, and the city is going to have to, uh, cut, we're going to have to tighten up, we're going to have to be innovative and try to streamline our, uh, operations. But overall, I think this year, we're going to, uh, do just fine, and I also feel that, uh, in the coming budget year, it'll be the same. I mean, we'll do whatever we need to do to make the, uh, the city function. I think we've got a well-run city, well-policed, fire, uh, the general, uh, staff, the, the divisions and the city do a good job. All you have to do is drive through, uh, Los Feliz or, uh, Glassell Park to see the condition of the roads or take a look at, uh, parks in other cities. But more specifically, when I talk to elected officials from California, when we go to the, uh, different, uh, the different meetings that we attend, uh, we're absolutely in much, much better shape than most of the, uh, other cities that I'm, uh, familiar with. I mean, in much, much better shape financially. So, um, I think we'll be able to make it through this, uh, period and we'll just have to keep working at it. That's, that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Quintero. Mr. Najjarin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Continuing with Mr. Quintero's theme, uh, we are in difficult times. Uh, these are perhaps some of the worst times that we may ever see, uh, perhaps throughout this century. It's happening in the state of California, across the United States, and globally. There is not a city council, or a village council, or a municipal entity that isn't sitting down as we are today or will be sitting down in the next few months assessing the financial health, the revenues and the expenditures of their organization. So, to that extent, let me say that the, uh, the howls of the city's demise currently are greatly exaggerated. And let me assure the public that we do have a dedicated staff, we do have dedicated councilmen. We don't always agree on the particular issues, but make no mistake, we are going to sit down and handle any financial situation, any crisis, any shortfall that faces this city. If there's one unifying thread between all of us now, and let's look forward to any council that's composed in the next year, I have faith in every single one of the individuals that they will put the well-being of the city at the forefront of any decision that they make. The trick to this, and the key to this, is to make sure that we reflect and we understand the community priorities when we adjust a budget. A budget really is a reflection of the priority, uh, of the services that the city provides to the customers, and the customers are us, the residents. And so what we've heard today is a lot of support for public safety. Um, and let me touch on that one. I am not in favor of cutting the public safety. Uh, I am going to do everything I can, uh, and I hope this council does everything in their power to stop gangs, to stop the Tunaville gang from coming into our city and running their crime rings because they are making inroads. And thank goodness, we had Todd Anderson several months ago who identified one of those individuals on a dark night on Chevy Chase Drive and set into series, uh, an enforcement action that put an end, I don't know if it's permanent, to, to their infiltration of our communities. We just can't let them get a foothold. And by cutting the police, we are going to be sending a message that Glendale, ah, doesn't care so much about, about law enforcement. The graphs that someone showed gauging the city's population versus expenditures on police, uh, and saying, "Well, we're spending more on police than the increase in our population", are really simplistic because we are not dealing with the same type of criminals and crime that we were dealing with 10 years ago, 20 years ago. Their methods are more insidious. Uh, there's different types of crime that they conduct, uh, financial crime. The drugs that they use, it's not just, uh, pot and coke anymore, it's all sorts of other drugs. Uh, when I was working in the DA's office here in 1984, cocaine was the main thing, uh, perhaps the only game in town that was going on. Perhaps some of the police officers remember, we were the hub of the Colombian cocaine distribution. We put the squeeze on that, but now there's ecstasy and, and lord knows what other kind of drugs are out there being made right in the backyards and distributed. We have to fight that. It's kind of like that movie, um, No Country for Old Men with Tommy Lee Jones. I don't know if you gentlemen have seen that. You've got an old country sheriff who is, who was sticking to his old types of enforcement and the old thoughts and the old staffing. He had one deputy, I think, and he's just hit head-on with the modern crime of druglords, of assassins, and it's a, uh, it's really a, a microcosm, I think, of what this country is facing with the sophistication of the crime rings that are coming out. And it's not just violent crime, there's identity theft, there's credit card fraud, there's a, a new, it's a new era of crime. The, um, the question of the waste, um, and one of the, one of the speakers talked about waste. We, uh, we are looking for ways to, uh, to make some profit from our waste. We had a presentation with the LA County Sanitation District several months ago. We, I think everyone on city council was very much in favor of developing a waste-to-energy plan, uh, and in fact, uh, former mayor Carl Roggio has a plan under wraps, uh, that's being used at Edwards Air Force Base.
Langley Field.
Langley Field. Uh, so it's not a new technology, it's something we can start to use to gain some, uh, some income and some energy, uh, from our, our, uh, Shoal Canyon, and it's something we are moving forward on. The, um, the one, this study session really is two parts. One is what have we done and what are we doing to balance this mid-year budget, '08, '09? Uh, the next question goes, what are we going to do in, uh, '09, '10? I think layoffs, uh, are the very last thing that we want to consider. I think they're very destructive to the organization, they're very inefficient because we have, uh, presumably spent hours and hours of training, uh, in those individuals, uh, and to let them go, um, is not, is not very productive. There are other ways. We're talking about furloughs. Uh, we're talking about, uh, attrition and not filling those, uh, positions through attrition. So we need to be very careful about how we, we start to trim the force. Everything I said about police goes with fire, Mr. Quintero did hit on it. We are not the single-family resident, uh, single-family residence community that we were so many years ago. We're having high rises downtown. Uh, we're becoming more congested. Uh, the challenges that are, that face our fire department are increasing exponentially, not in relation to our population. And just looking not, I didn't want to get too far into the '09, '10 budget, uh, because I know those challenges are yet to be discussed and a lot of details yet to be fleshed out. Uh, however, I do want to, uh, see if we have taken into account on the revenue side, the, uh, and I just got the report, uh, last night from the MTA. The Measure R proceeds are about $2 million, uh, and I'm not sure if that gets dumped into general fund. It gives us perhaps a little bit of flexibility. I know we like, we have the opportunity to, uh, transfer funds, so it gives us a little bit of breathing room. Uh, there's also some other funding opportunities that I don't think we need to be so certain of, but the Measure R is a tax that, uh, the half-cent sales tax that we all voted for, uh, the 66% majority at least, and that is coming as a local return to all the agencies, according to population. So I'm happy with the adjustments made for the '08, '09 budget, uh, and clearly, we're going to be having this discussion for the, uh, '09, '10 budget, uh, perhaps a month or so. When does that come, Mr. Star, a couple of months?
Probably, probably in April, once we get our second quarter, uh, revenue returns.
Uh, whatever it looks like, this council, or a council by any other makeup, will be facing those challenges, will be listening to the community and setting the priorities, not only what we believe, but after listening to you and hearing your input, and that's how we do things and hopefully how we will be doing things. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Najjarin. Mr. Yusefian.
Uh, I think there's one thing we need to keep in mind, and this will be the slogan that I think I will steal from our president, which is pragmatism over politics, folks. That's what's going to solve our problem. Um, it'd be easy for me to say that I like to hire every single police officer you need, um, but nevertheless, I need to be pragmatic. They're not going to work for free. Every one of them wants their paycheck, and they should because after all, they put their lives on the line. Every firefighter goes into a burning building, wants to make sure that their family's taken care of in case something happens to them. Nevertheless, I have to run a whole city, not just two departments. So, Mr. Starbird, if we do not cut 5% across the board and leave fire and police out of it, what would be the cuts to the rest of the departments?
Well, let's see, fire and police, safety services make up about 55% of the general fund. If 5% is 8 million, you could take 55% of 8 or roughly, uh, four to four and a half million dollars would need to be accounted for someplace else.
Uh, according to your staff report that you gave us two weeks ago, it's between 20 to 30% reduction in other departments.
In all likelihood, yeah.
Okay. So, and you need to keep that in mind. So keep that in mind, if you don't want any of those cuts, don't come here complaining that there's no parks. Don't come here complaining that we have to charge you for every book that you check out at the library, or the libraries are not open all the time, that you want them to be open. Don't complain if your roads have potholes in it because we have no money to fix them or the people to fill them. So, it's easy for me to sit here and say, yes, I want to keep every single police officer and every single fired person. I'm running for council, and I will tell you one thing, Mr. Weaver said this. I said I will not take any money from any, any of the unions, and I haven't. I'll go further. I'm not going to take any endorsements from any of the local unions. How's that? I don't think whether I get endorsement or don't get an endorsement has anything to do with my decisions, but if it's going to put your heart in the right place, you But if he's going to put your heart in the right place, you think that I am going to be swayed at one another, I will give you that. I'm gonna go back to what I need to do here tonight, which is, I'd like to ask the union chief from the police department to come forward.
Mr. Yusefian, the head of the union or the police chief?
The head of the union.
Okay. This wasn't clear, I want to make sure we're bringing up the right party.
I was pointing in his direction.
Are we gonna open up negotiations?
No, 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 I'm gonna ask a question because Mr. Starbird mentioned something, so I want to verify that.
Right. He has a gun, Mr. Yusefian, I want to warn you.
Yes, he can. Your name, please?
I'm Larry Valasteros, President of the GPOA.
Thank you very much. City manager mentioned that there has been some negotiation going on between the unions. Okay. I would like to know where you, in those meetings?
I was in those meetings, Mr. Starbird was in one of them, where he formally informed us that he will be asking us to sit down for reopening the contract negotiations.
Any specifics has been discussed?
No specifics have been discussed. And I take the open-door policy of I will sit down and talk with anybody about anything.
Thank you very much, appreciate that very much. From the fire? Yeah?
Mr. Stavros, would you mind, please? And let me just ask, in the interest of time, Mr. Yusefian.
I have 12 minutes.
No, no, what I was gonna say is if you have others that we can put in the on-deck circle in the meantime, so we can...
Yes. Mr. Zern will be next.
All right. Mr. Starb? Zern, he is apparently gonna wanna speak to you, so if you wouldn't mind preparing yourself. And whom else, Mr. Yusefian?
Mr. Roggio will be next after that.
Mr. Roggio, okay.
Same question.
Chris Stavros, President of Glendale Firefighters Association.
Same question.
We're ready to talk to help the city through whatever they need to do.
So you were part of that?
Excuse me, one second, gentlemen?
You were part of that, you were in that meeting?
We had a budget meeting where the budget was discussed. And previously, we've expressed an open willingness to help the city through any crisis. And I think we have a responsibility to do that. I'll even go a step further, you know, it's not just in tough times where city departments should be looking at being responsible.
Efficient.
Yeah, efficient. It's not only in tough times, they should be doing it all the time. And I believe that there are some ways for the fire division to reduce costs with a minor effect in service. And I think a fire chief is gonna be coming to the city manager with some ideas that we've been working on, with him on. And it's not necessarily popular with the people I represent, I want to make it clear to that. But I believe that we have some ideas and we want to help.
So you have talked to the fire chief, you have some ideas, so they will be coming to the plate and we will be talking about it.
Yeah, if you keep them around for a little bit longer.
Thank you very much, appreciate that very much.
All right.
Thank you. Next item on this is gonna be Mr. Zern. Mr. Zern, the reason I'm asking you is, by the way, I don't want to put you in the spot, but nevertheless, you are on the spot. So let me ask you this.
The new.
Last week, you had a cadre of two pages, huge, giant document, that had all the shovel-ready projects on roads, structure.
Correct.
Correct.
Or the stimulus package submitted.
And how much was that?
Well, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian.
Just the roads?
It's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 75 million.
Okay, just the roads, okay. How much gas tax do you have in that account?
With the accumulation that was talked about before, we're about 18 million in accumulated money.
So let me ask you this, if we have 75 million dollars' worth of road improvement to be done, and we have 18 million dollars in the bank, why didn't we do some of those road improvements?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Yusefian, the reason we even have the surplus of gas tax goes back to 2004 or '05. You remember, we experienced some pretty substantial damages as part of the rainfall that occurred, record rainfall. That not only had to do with slope and road repairs, it also had to do with sewers and storm drains that we found to be deficient. So, as soon, once we got out of that storm season, my people have been working primarily to fix and repair those issues. So we've rebuilt numerous roads, we've rebuilt slopes, we're continuing, we still have slopes to build. We put in three of the biggest sewer repair projects this city's ever undertaken, two large storm drain projects. Those are all funded from other sources, primarily FEMA for the damage repair or the sewer fund, which has left us with, it's just a capacity issue. I put my people on that as a priority, so the streets for a couple of years didn't get as much attention, and we built up the gas tax money. Because as Mr. Starbird said, that money's very specific in what you can use it for.
And the reason I'm asking this is because we have 75 million dollars' worth of projects. And based on your statements last week, these are shovel-ready. That means you have the plans, you have the specs, they're ready to go. So, and our workers are not the ones who pave the streets, we contract out, right? So why can't we contract out some of those, kind of be our own stimulus package in this city, and have some of the roads in the neighborhoods that are in need of repair be taken care of?
Well, Councilmember Yusefian, what we are doing, first of all, just to go back, when I said they'd be shovel, they'll be shovel-ready by the deadlines that have been instituted, where there, many of them are in design right now, we just believe we will get to the point to be able to execute those agreements. I'm hoping we get every penny of that 75 million dollars, but the chances are that we won't. But nonetheless, if there's a second phase of the stimulus package...
I'm not talking about the stimulus package, I'm talking about our 17 million dollars and all the projects that we have. I'm just trying to figure out, why aren't we fixing our own roads and spend the 17 million dollars to fix our roads? You answered my question. I'm gonna go to the next question.
I could just add, we will, we'll be ready, because stimulus money doesn't come, we'll use that money to fix the roads.
We are transferring some money from general fund to the capital improvement, and these are repairs, road infrastructure repairs, these are repairs, they weren't capital improvements, they're repairs, there are sidewalks and so on and so forth. So we're going to pay for them through the capital improvement budget.
Is this the 1.5 million that was up there?
Right.
That actually, no, was capital improvement-type projects, not just general repairs, these were large-scale projects. But a portion are funded out of gas tax, another portion are funded out of general CIP revenues, because as Mr. Starbird said, we can't meet the gap with just gas tax.
So would this be funded totally by the gas tax?
That's what we're proposing.
Are they qualified for that?
Yes, they are.
So they're road infrastructures?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Thank you. And my favorite mayor.
It looks like you're in the Lou Gehrig position, Mr. Roggio, Mayor Roggio, welcome. And I'm wondering why.
Mr. Roggio, why? Because you were here when, among Ginger Brumberg and Larry Zarian and some of the...
Barry Meldner.
Jerry Meldner, when you took on a major battle to get LA out of our landfill.
Yes.
So my question is, so your memory's a heck of a lot better than mine, because I wasn't there at the time, besides you have firsthand knowledge and I have second. How much money did we spend trying to get LA out, and how many years did it take us to get LA out?
Took us about three. I don't know how much money we spent. The end result was what we were trying to do was to give more life to the canyon, because LA was the hog at the trough. And I think you're very wise in considering waste-to-energy by virtue of the fact that within the next 20 years, every landfill around here is going to be out of business. There is no more room. So in one way or another, you're gonna have to do something. And the something is, why not begin to look at waste in the form of fuel and convert it to energy? The Langley experience that Ara brought up was, is now 30 years, meeting all EPA requirements and has been going on all that time. Their product is steam. The next step is steam to drive generators, which in turn will give you electricity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So here's some of my issues on this item. I have an issue with the Shoal Canyon waste. I don't think that it's being penny-wise and pound-foolish unless we have a solid contract to make sure it is done for a temporary time. Filling that canyon and getting expansion to increase that Shoal Canyon, that's gonna have huge ramification on two neighborhoods, one Chevy Chase, second Glen Oaks Canyon. For us to go up another 100 feet or so, just in trash, in my opinion, is not an appropriate thing to do, unless we can do this for a short time just to cover the gap. And a good contract, solid contract with several attorneys to make sure that we can get out of it on a temporary basis. I think we should move forward with gasification. Mr. Roggio is right, Langley's is a 30-year project, it is more of a steam generation. A gasification is a whole different ballgame. There's at least 15 to 20 of those equipment identicals operating in Japan since 2005. You basically take fuel, that is your trash, and it turns into gas. There is no burning of anything. And that gas, you could put in your beeline buses when it comes out and drive it, and has no waste at all. And so that's what we should be doing. But that will take few years, it's not gonna solve our problem here. But it will give us money down the road, it will solve a lot of problems. We will meet our fuel needs for some of our transportation. If you want to inject a little bit more air and steam into the waste product, it will give you synthetic fuel, you could put in your trash trucks and drive it around, and on top of that, generate the heat that you need to run your steam turbines. So it's, you don't have to build more power plants down here to generate your electricity. But that's down the road. Mr. Weaver, he's gone, but I want to tell him no, that he has another voice added to his. I am for 410, and I'll tell you why. I have been working as a contractor in this city since 1980, and I have been talking to the staff that work in here and talk to other contractors that work in the city. The current schedule, the way it's operating, is not working. And I'll tell you why. Staff is unable to work because half the staff is out of the room, they're not there, and the other half that has to cooperate with the other half, it's just not there. So the work really doesn't get done. When you show up to the counter, you may get a person on the zoning, you have nobody at the fire, or you have the different person on the fire who hasn't worked on your project before, and now that person has to get themselves familiarized to what is it that you want to do, and nine out of 10 times, they tell you, "Why don't you come back?" So I think the best thing to do is increase the time schedule, I think six to six is 12 hours, but nevertheless, I think you could do that and make a 10-hour. And you go four, 10 hours, everybody gets their work done, everybody shows up, fewer people drive, and we could spend less money on electricity, which is about a saving of $180,000 in here. I would like to know what the all-personal appliance eliminated is. What is that?
We did, pretty much each department has a centralized refrigerator, microwave, things like that. What we found in a survey of the departments is that there are a number of personal appliances, whether they be actually personal refrigerators, actually Jim Starbird and I were guilty of that, and space heaters and other items that actually could be done away with and resulted in a very significant energy savings.
So what are we gonna do? Are we talking about not purchasing them anymore?
These are personal, these are personal appliances, small refrigerators, heaters, fans, could be TV sets.
So it's an issue of energy saving?
Exactly, energy saving, right.
So we've asked employees, use the centralized one, if there isn't a centralized one, get a centralized one.
No more personal appliances.
Fleet size, explain to me, when you say...
Before we explain anything more, Mr. Yusefian, by my watch now, you've had over 20 minutes, and we have one more council member who is now no longer going to have 12 minutes even. So if you could conclude soon, I would also like to ask a couple of questions myself.
What is fleet size? What fleet you're talking about?
Well, we look at the, essentially, the four garages, the four operations between Public Works, GWP, Police and Fire, and then also including Parks, Recreation, Neighborhood Services. We looked at the totality of the number of pieces of equipment and evaluated based on usage, can we eliminate pieces of equipment, substantial pieces of equipment? And the answer was yes, we can combine usage between departments, there's a variety of things that we can do so that we eliminate the equipment, so we don't have to maintain it anymore, we don't have to depreciate it, we don't have to purchase it.
Last item is, I would like, just like Mr. Quintero, get the list of all the take-home vehicles?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yusefian. I will try to be very quick. Some of what I'm going to do is recap for our city staff, some of the issues that the public has raised. But I'll do that in a moment. First of all, again, thank you all for attending, thank you for bringing your input and your consideration. I want to thank Mr. Elliott, Mr. Starbird, Mr. McFaul, and Michelle, and everyone else who has worked so hard to not just do the work in terms of finding the numbers, but putting them in a form that the public and the council can understand, and wrap their, both their heads and their hands around. Couple of questions. Let me see here. One question that I continually am asked by a variety of people has to do with retirees. How are retirees, that is, city employees who are leaving city employment, how is that factored into our numbers related to vacancies and so on?
Well, an individual who retires...
More basic question, are they?
Well, regardless of how they leave, whether it's through retirement or they go take another job someplace else, for whatever reason, a person leaving creates a vacancy. Any vacancy is essentially caught up within our hiring freeze and is evaluated to determine whether or not it should be filled, or whether or not there are other options we can take to reduce costs as a result of that vacancy occurring. So whether through retirement, or they go someplace else, they move out of the city, they take another job, every vacancy is evaluated.
It's evaluated, well, but how does that relate to these 24 vacancies and so on?
Well, the 24 vacancies are positions that have, that will actually be proposed for elimination this year. There are a number of vacancies that are still being frozen in a hiring freeze, whether or not they're eliminated remains to be seen. We have in the neighborhood of Michelle, 50 other vacant positions in the general fund? Approximately 50 vacancies in the general fund, ranging everywhere from clerks to mid-management and management levels, every one of those is being evaluated. On the whole, the estimate is one in 10 positions is cleared for filling. For example, if a police officer position opens, a critical safety position opens, regardless of the fund it happens to be in, we're evaluating it to see if we should continue to hold it vacant or fill it.
All right. Take-home vehicles, I know that there has been some movement there, can you comment on that? And based on the recent issues in the news related to the City of Los Angeles and Laura Chik's office, do we have any $1,500 limit gas cards out there, to your knowledge, Mr. Starbird?
Well, we do have purchase cards that, for vehicles that are taken home for various reasons, can be used for fueling the vehicles. We've taken steps, as they have in LA, to immediately limit the use of those cards. Before Laura Chik hit headlines with her program, we were already underway evaluating all take-home vehicles. I think our number throughout the city is about, what, about 100?
Approximately 100, right.
Approximately 100 vehicles that are authorized for being taken home, everywhere from command staff in the Fire and Police Departments to emergency response people and utilities. We are evaluating each and every one of those to look at the distance they're being taken home, the justification for the need for somebody to respond or utilize an emergency vehicle outside of the city, in an effort to reduce as many of those as we possibly can.
Okay. And do we know what the limits are on those gas cards?
Actually, the majority of the vehicles are fueled at city fueling stations, so because it's pool cars aside, the majority are fueled there. As far as the specific limit, I actually, I don't know.
I'd like to know that. I'd like to know how many of those cards are out there and what the limits are on those, monthly limits are on those, and what do we do to, I mean, I'm just curious now what we do in terms of how we know what we're filling up, where the gas is going. The next thing relates to the TOT, I agree with you, Mr. Starbird, I think that is extremely optimistic on page 12 of the PowerPoint. The number there that was inserted as an increase in TOT in regard to the 2009, 2010 preview changes in resource, I think that number is not realistic. Let me see. I will agree with Mr. Quintero, related to... I will agree with Mr. Quintero, related to streamlining of, at least a strong look at streamlining community services, GRA, housing, all of that. I would like to take a look at that, and I would like us to have some input from staff on the possibilities there, issues related to our graphics department and, and others. I'll also agree with him on the Central Avenue widening. I wanna know what those road projects are that we're talking about that have not been broken out, because I would like to know whether that is one of them. I also think there's some other areas that affect the council and management, like the $500 a year fitness reimbursement that comes back. I think that all of us, including the council, should participate in this, and that, I think, is something we can do without. I don't think I need a $500 reimbursement so I can go out and buy some tennis shoes or, or get a gym membership. I may need it, but if, but I'll, I'll, I'll do that on my own, thank you. I have never put in a request for any of that, but I do know that that is out there, and I think that that's something that can go away. I'm not in favor of the 410. I know that's popular with, in a lot of organizations, that's popular with employees. And I hear all the benefits being discussed as to why that is a good thing, it just doesn't take in one thing into account, it doesn't benefit the public. And, and so, I will not support anything like that, and I hope that this city doesn't move in that direction. I understand what my colleague, Mr. Yusefian, is saying with regard to contractors and builders, however, contractors and builders aren't the only constituents we have, and I know he wasn't implying that that is our only constituent, but we have lots of folks who come down here to do other things, like pay bills, pay the utility bills, and so on, and have other business to transact at our city. And I think that, Mr. Starbird, the annual savings is about $180,000. If we close shop on Fridays, and about $80,000 or something, if we-
Our, our estimate was $80,000 in utility savings if we close one Friday. I presume if we close all Fridays, it's probably about $160,000.
$160,000. I think that the, the public benefit is outweighed. I think that's a, not a, a good place to, to save money, I think there are other areas. There was a, a graph shown today, I think it was Mr. Phil Pot, but I can't be sure. Mr. Fox, you are here, could you please come up and answer a question about a graph showing we have $64 million in, from the Audit Committee, I guess, meeting? What is that? If we have a $64 million surplus, I'm sure this council would love to know about it.
The best way I can explain it is, Mr. Starbird had previously given the, the explanation regarding revenues versus proceeds that were received from bond transactions. He'd previously covered that, and this graph here only takes into account revenues and doesn't take into consideration any bond proceeds, and that's the mismatch between the revenues and expenses that were discussed earlier.
Let me supplement that, Mr. Mayor, if you pass the chart down, Bill. This, this chart is a 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, is an eight-year look at the difference between the revenues and the expenses in the general fund. And it shows, as we pointed out, that with the exception of one year, we have consistently had a balanced budget, meaning expenditures under revenues in each of those years. So, he's taken the difference of the accumulate, he's taken the accumulated differences between those for that, for that period of time, and noted that as a result, we should have 60-some million dollars in savings. I'll, I'll point out, however, that a portion of this savings has been transferred into the capital improvement program, as you have done to support capital improvements. A portion of this has gone into putting, building your reserves back up, because we utilized some reserves for the purchase of open space land.
All right, so to-
So, there's every reason why these have been generated.
To bring this to a short conclusion, you don't, you and Mr. Elliott and Mr. Fox don't have a box in your office and have divided up $64 million in large bills or something there, I can assume, is that right? So-
It is in his personal-
I'll take, I'll take the chuckle as a no.
It's like asking if I'd still beat my wife.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, that, that graph was right out of the October 7th revenue study session, that was just given to the Audit Committee yesterday.
I wanted to touch on that as a follow-up to the question about the $300 million differential, because it keeps coming up, and I just want a, a clear view for the public as to what those numbers are. If we wanna talk about things in realistic terms, that's fine, and criticisms are good, and, and it challenges the city to be better, but to take a thread of something and try to blow it up into something it's not, doesn't help anybody, except just, it's just rhetoric and nothing else. So, I just wanted to talk about that. Let's recap a little bit here. We heard from, and the reason I wanna take the time to do this is because the public took the time to come here. You've heard from all of us, but I wanna make sure that we've clearly heard from, from them as well. Ms. Grabelsky was the first up, and she was talking about a 1% cut in Police and Fire. Her concern is that those are in areas that are going to affect public safety, and, and I guess not in benefits salaries or increases or cuts in, in other areas, but wants to make sure that they're not coming from cuts in programs or sworn officers. Mr. Phil Pot spoke, he touched on a 40, $64 million surplus, I think we heard from Mr. Fox on that. Mr. Zemet spoke, wanted to, wanted us to focus on purchasing, on our purchasing structure, and also the downstream consequences of cuts that we might make here. Mr. Kokorian spoke, he talked about SROs, and he believes that, that our elimination of the SROs in middle schools, and the last go-around was a mistake. He also talked about the downstream consequences, and how it relates to gangs and violence and cuts in public safety. Mr. Hoffman spoke, and he spoke about contractors versus civil servants, mutual aid and mutual aid revenue. He talked about reeling in union expenditures within campaigns and so on, and the impact of three-man engine companies and wanting to know how that has worked out to the extent that we have done that, if we have done that. Mr. Kazazian spoke and talked about cuts in public safety, also about Shoal Canyon and the efficiency of its use. Mr. Milano spoke and talk about, talked about population increase as a function of salaries, expenses, et cetera, and a number of other issues as to measured results. Mr. Evadian spoke and talked about concerns over cuts to Fire and Police as it relates to our, our desirability as a city in terms of investment and continuing to have, making Glendale, Glendale a desirable place to live, as well as suggestion that perhaps we should might also look at increased taxes if necessary, rather than a loss to, to services. And then Mr. Barnes spoke last, spoke about quality of life versus public safety and the high cost of public input, the high cost of doing business in Glendale, and how this council, he believes, has placed the input of the public at, say, DRB meetings and so on, over the interests of business. If I have not covered a few of the items that were mentioned, I apologize, I was writing fast, and you were all speaking quicker than I can write, so.
I've got notes too, Mr. Mayor, you've covered them.
I wanna ask my council colleagues quickly if they have any other thing to add, the emphasis is on the word "quickly." Mr. Weaver, let me start, over your end.
No, I have one thing I will ask Mr. Elliott later.
Okay, Mr. Quintero.
Well, since politics were injected into the budget discussion, I just wanna point out, Mr. Yusefian was running as an incumbent, he received the endorsement, and financial contributions of the employee association, so he chose not to do it this time, however, last time he did accept contributions from the employee associations.
All right, Mr. Najarian.
I will turn down the appointment of the Secretary of State if the President so offers it.
That is so noted, Mr. Yusefian.
I would like to also let, add my voice to Mr. Quintero's and yours, Mr. Mayor, that we need to look at all these departments and try to streamline them and put them together possibly. We've talked about this since 2001. Mr. Quintero was there, you weren't there unfortunately, but we are yet to get to that, so maybe this is an opportunity.
Okay. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd indulge me with maybe just two or three minutes at most, it's not often-
Well, we're in a revenue gathering mode, Mr. City Manager, so what will you pay us in order to-
Whatever you like, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
We, it's, it's not often we have this, this sort of an audience for a budget review session, usually there's a handful of people, and the, the city staff outnumber the public. So, we have heard over the past several months, comments by various people, actually a small number of people, about the cost to public employees, and we've gotten into that here today. But comments have been made the last couple of meetings by an individual in particular about excessive salaries in the public sector. So, I asked staff to pull a few numbers together that I might just very quickly share with you, and what I've tried to look at is salary adjustments to public employees versus the Consumer Price Index over the past, and the numbers we have are since 1991. A comparison of where we stand in the labor market, because our philosophy is, we need to be competitive, we need to attract good quality people, but we don't pay the top. We shoot for the average or maybe slightly above, but we can never afford to pay tops, and yet we get very good people here in Glendale, because this is a good city to work in. And then a figure on per capita spending, you mentioned per capita spending for Police and Safety. Frankly, we have very good numbers on overall per capita revenue and expenditure comparisons. So, if I can, just very, very quickly, with respect to salary increases over the past, that would be 17 years, if you look at the Consumer Price Index in the area of our police officers, they've received about a 3.3 and 1/2% average annual increase, CPI has been 2.9. Firefighters, 3.7, CPI 2.9. The general managers, 2.9, CPI has been 2.9. Executives, 2.8, CPI has been 2.9. In the area of the labor market, and we survey labor market at least 10 cities, we try for 13, in all of our employee groups. For the GCEA, the last survey was in 2005. 76 classifications were surveyed. We had 33 classes at or above the average, and I will tell you, the bulk of that is at the average. We had 27 classifications below the average. We gave an adjustment to classes that were 5% below the average. For firefighters, we surveyed three classes, fairly simple to do. There were three classes slightly above the average, no classes below the average. We gave, we had a 10-city survey where we were approximately 5% above the average, nowhere near the top or the top quartile, and we were at or below in a tri-city survey. We also look at what our neighbors are doing, Burbank and Pasadena, to see how we fare in the close-in market. For police officers, we surveyed two classes, police officers and sergeants. Both of those were below the average, 5% below the average in the 10-market survey, and 5% below the average in the tri-market survey. Looking at sworn managers in Police and Fire, we surveyed five classes. Two of those were at or above the average, three of those were below the average. In the area of the Police Department, those managers were as much as 9 to 15% below the average. For general managers in the city, and we surveyed 198 classifications, 87 of those were at or slightly above the average, 39 were below the average. We've done what we call three-market adjustments over three years for positions only that are below the average, and that's not to get them to the average, it's only to try and catch up. With respect to executives, our last survey was in June of 2008. 19 positions were surveyed, three of those positions are at or above the average, 11 of them are below the average, and five of them we didn't have comparisons for, and there had been no adjustments either for COLA or market in 2008 for those positions. Lastly, you mentioned the per capita figures for police expenditures. Another chart, it was in the same pack, and I think that the, the Audit Group looked at, is the per capita revenue and expenditures comparison for the city, and we compare there with 14 other cities. The average of the 14 is $1,039 in expenditures per capita for all public services, Glendale 719. If you take out the two very high cities that are aberrations, that's Santa Monica and Beverly Hills, they seem to have so much money that they spend, they are way above everybody else. So, I pulled those two out to see how we looked. Also pulled out Santa Clarita, because they are right on the bottom, and they are mostly a contract city. So, I pulled out the very high and one of the very low, and we are right on the average. In fact, we are $3 per capita below the average on expenditures, and about $7 per capita on the revenue side above the average. So, we have average revenues, below-average expenditures, and our spending. Our employees are kept competitive, but our target is the average, and I will tell you, I've worked in four cities for 37 years in California. We have the finest group of employees and managers here. Frankly, money couldn't buy the kind of people we have, and yet we don't shoot for the top. So, I'll continue to repeat this every time that's brought up, but I wanna start to put that myth, myth to rest. Mr. Mayor, thank you for indulging me.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No, moved.
Second. We are adjourned, thank you all.